From previous meeting on Tuesday, April twelfth.
Make motion approve the meeting minutes.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, Brian?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries number three, claims and payroll. Any questions?
Any questions on that? Make a motion approve claims and payroll.
Okay, second.
Is that your motion?
All in favor, Tyler?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Motion carries reports, Mayor Police Chief. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm gonna pick your, or pick your brain or ch- on Thursday, the day of the second storm, when I was at lunch, I had somebody ask me the previous day on the Wednesday storm, why the tornado sirens didn't blow, and I says, I thought it was, I wasn't in town, but I heard that it hit really fast and there wasn't, really wasn't no warning or watch.
You know, I don't know.
And they didn't know if in the future, they should call nine one one to tell Pierce to blow our sirens out?
I know, we were in contact with the National Weather Service and they weren't really talking about any rotation. But they been, they were finding rotations all over northeast Nebraska that weren't being called in. And I was up on Ninth Street at thirteen when most of it hit.
Right.
I didn't see anything, but mostly it was on the west part of town. But some people who've seen stuff blow off, thought they did see some rotation.
I talked to Sherry Wednesday night, the night it happened, and she said she was ducking into the businesses, and then when she went into Madison County Bay, Mr. Johnson said, oh, your roof just blew up. Part of your roof just blew up, so.
Tree branches and trees were falling down too, so.
But it sounded like from, it was just really fast and there really wasn't no warning, or?
It was quick.
Or re- yeah. Or not even a watch, I mean, like it was just.
And you have the monthly activity for, I believe it's April?
Yes.
So it's a pick up again?
Yeah, kind of a busy month in April. May's been getting really active and busy too, but we have had, we had a dog problem with somebody's dogs. I think we've wrote them like five, six hundred tickets already for their dogs. Two of them have been euthanized and are gone now, and the other ones not, but the other ones, really nice dog, he runs all over and you can talk to it, but.
Which one is that?
That one is, uh.
The black one or the brown one?
The brown one. Black one's been euthanized.
No. No.
The brown one hasn't been euthanized, the black one has.
The black one was by the bar and he was down by the post office this morning.
Well, then he'll be going to court because he was supposed to have it done by the state laws, it has to be euthanized. The white one can't even walk.
Right.
But the brown one?
The brown one is hooked up to a chain in the back around a tree.
Okay.
Cause I drove through there to see, I went around the block, and the black one was standing by the back door of the bar, and that's the reason why I drove around, because I didn't wanna deal with him, and then when I got here, he was down by the post office this morning.
When was that?
This morning.
Okay. What happened to these?
I saw he was there, he was.
He got euthanized, but he didn't. Okay, we'll go ahead and proceed and take him right to court with that.
That's about ten o'clock this morning.
In the past where these dogs did come from, and that same owner, they said he spent around two, three, four thousand dollars of fines on his dogs. So, we've been dealing with that a lot in April.
Well, definitely get it handled.
Yeah.
Give him plenty of chances.
Thinking around the money.
Can't help somebody out.
Yeah, well, you're all that because it did have a little confrontation with the officer, and that's how this got started with the state law to get it gone.
And euthanized. And I had a truck door sometimes that, well, can't get out of their vehicle because they're there, or go to their vehicle.
Well, it about got shot twice already, so.
I believe it.
Look at that, domestics are up a little bit. And this time of year, traffic starts picking up a little bit. Any questions?
Okay, thank you. I gotta remember to ask you something at the end of the meeting if we can change the date of the help for the meeting a week earlier.
Sure.
I'll ask it. Thanks. Hi, Susan.
Hey.
Congrats on your.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Kinda weird.
Great work does not go unnoticed.
Kinda weird, kinda weird.
What? Weird because I'm the, they told me I'm the youngest person who's ever won. Um, you can only be nominated by other economic developers in the state, and usually, we do the nominations, like, well, here someone's retiring, they've been at it for decades.
Sure.
And so we'll submit names, and so for me to do it in five years, one thing, and at this age, it was kinda weird. So I'm looking at it, all these like, people have been doing it for thirty years, trying to give that acceptance, which is like, holy crap, they probably hate me. But, uh, no, it was nice, so, and I brought it, if you guys wanna take a peek at it, before I mount it on the wall somewhere. But, um, so we've been kinda busy with conferences, basically since the la- end of April, um, I went to the C E C conference in Columbus, and that's Connecting Entrepreneurial Communities Conference, put on by the University of Nebraska, um, brings several hundred developers and utilities and, um, city, you know, uh, county government people. And, uh, we did two breakout sessions that we were the leading for, um, one was, uh, how to get cities ready for the decision-making process, and we had, uh, ran out of chairs in our session, we had over thirty people attend it, um, all of them wanted to know, what'd you do in Plainview? How did you do it? How'd you get the city to agree? Like, how did you move these, you know, because they struggle, um, those, some communities are not progressive, or they don't, they think they are, but they don't take the risk. And so how do you con- you know, how do you not convince councils, but how do you talk to your leaders and try to set the, the, the stage, you know, to make some of these decisions so that you can see the success that Plainview had? So our session actually, we ran overtime even, um, but a lot of people got a lot of good information out of that, um, and so we really just highlighted Plainview there. But Pierce is getting, Pierce is catching up, um, all the things that we did for you, we're doing in Pierce, um, they're about three years behind you, but they'll hopefully get there too. Um, and then the other one we did was about pop-up retail opportunities, um, talking about how, how we started Food Truck Mondays, I started the food trucks in Creighton and we kinda moved it here. Um, and how we, when we support those, um, you know, kind of those pop-up opportunities, what does that do for our community? And one of the things that we're seeing with the pop-ups here is, you know, we tried to do it on a Monday when, at that time, Mary's was closed for lunch, we didn't really have a lot of other options other than Subway and Casey's. Um, so it was bringing choice to the community, you know, allowing people that, to have, you know, experience something different. But one of the things that we started to notice is that people were starting to tag, like, their spouses and their friends and their neighbors, and so people were, you know, were hanging out in the park, eating, you know, spending time together, so it kind of, we started to see it become more of a social activity, not just a food truck in the park. So, um, that was kind of an interesting, you know, way to look at it, and then that pop-up liquidation, um, I don't know if you've been, but it's in Pierce, and that started out of, uh, flea markets and trucks, and if you go and they're open on a Saturday, it's like Black Friday. I mean, line out the door around the corner, it's kinda crazy, but one of the things that we've done there is we partnered them with of the other retailers that are open on Saturday, like Jay's Place or, um, River Roasters, and so people are like dispersing into the community, and we're starting to see, um, some of the other businesses are reaping the benefits of that, or people from the lake, we did a big lake project, are coming into the community and are utilizing, um, the businesses in town, and a lot of that has to, you know, we kinda started with that pop-up shop. What's open on a Saturday brings a lot of people from out of town, and that's one of them. Um, and they're doing so well that they're actually opening up a secondary location in Norfolk now, called Bend the Trend. Basically, all closed for Macy's, Nordstrom's, Nordstrom's Rack for like twenty bucks, so, kinda neat, I was disappointed they didn't keep that part here, but it's kinda neat to see how, if you foster a non-traditional business, that how, how those things can grow, so. We did those two sessions, had great turnout, um, really good feedback, and then obviously I went to NEDA last week, um, and that's the Nebraska Economic Developers Association Conference, um, lots of good learning, lots of good breakout sessions. Told Jeremy, he can probably be expecting some phone calls from some other communities, very interested in L B two fifty-six. Um, a lot of people have maybe heard of it, or they haven't, but they haven't gone as far as to adopt the ordinance, we went as far as adopting an ordinance. Problem is, we're not using it, so how do we utilize it? Um, Pierce hired Five-Rule Planning to do the enforcement, um, Central City hired, uh, a commissioner to kinda do the enforcement, so what do we need to do, you know, for enforcement? So it was really good conversation about how we can do some things that will make us better as well, so NEDA was great, and then obviously, the Economic Development Professional of the Year Award, um, given to one person who does community economic development for a city or county, and then one person who is basically what they call service provider. They work for the state or they work for the utility companies, all, all of our utility companies have economic development as well, so, um, for this year, it's us. Pass this round, if you wanna take a peek. This is the highest award you can get, so I'm done. There's nowhere else to go from here, so don't expect anything else, cause this is it, like, I don't know what else to do.
Well, don't retire.
I told my husband, like, so.
You can screw a little additional years on there on the bottom.
Nope, it's a one-time deal, so it was kinda nice, um, alright, moving on, uh, some fun stuff, park project. Uh, Jeremy, I think, brought the tiles for what the flooring will be like, we received a thirty thousand dollar grant from the lower alternative D that we wrote, um, so that was nice. There was, uh, ten communities vying for some of those dollars, four got through, we were one of the four, so, um, pretty glad that we got that. Um, and then nearly seventy thousand dollars has been raised from the community, um, for this project. So what we're looking at here is, uh, you're gonna have one tennis court running north and south. You're gonna have a full-size basketball court running north and south. You're gonna have half-court running east-west, and you're gonna have a couple pickleball courts in there as well. So, we're taking kind of an underutilized space and we're putting four play surfaces in one area. Um, and then the dirt, the dirt court tile is what we're looking at using, um, it's kinda snaps together, um, you can get different colors, you can get all the different play lines put on there, so that's what we're looking at, if you wanna step on it, bounce on it, touch it. Um, am I missing something, Jeremy, about that project? Uh, P B C F is gonna meet this Thursday, if we can invite the park board, I think that'd be a good thing, maybe discuss color of that, um, I'm a, I don't want red. Like, the whole thing red, so we'll see what happens, but, um, I think that'll be really nice. I, I'm not gonna leave the timeline up to the city when that project starts, or, um, that'd be kinda up to you guys, but the funding is there. Um, so we need a little bit more for Plainview, um, because the city's looking at doing some of the sidewalks around it, and, you know, maybe some additional concrete work. So maybe, I'm thinking about writing a Keno grant, um, to kinda boost, for the city's portion of that, somewhere between four and ten thousand, maybe a little bit more. Um, kinda waiting on Jeremy to let me know for sure what the numbers are, but the thing with that is, I know when we do Keno grants, you have these school groups that come, and it's kind of like a continuous thing every year, it's sort of a once and done, this is a bigger, I'm gonna ask for a larger amount, one, it's for the city, two, it's a fifty-year project, this thing's gonna last for a very long time, it's gonna impact a lot of people, not only people who live here, but the people that visit our park, you know, as they camp there, they're coming through town, so, I'm gonna ask for a little bit larger amount and give you some warning on that. Um, and the other thing too is I, I don't want the other groups to kinda come here and say, oh, well, I wanna ask for five and ten thousand too, because it's a little bit different, you know, so, see what you think about that when I do it.
This is gonna be in the main park or the band show?
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
Right where the tennis courts are right now. And then I don't know, someone had brought it to you that maybe the chain link fence around it is maybe not so hot, I don't know if you looked at that, Jeremy, or not, but.
Uh, that was supposed to be all in that bed.
Is it?
Concrete, that's what Kevin told me.
The chain link fence?
The repairs to the one, the concrete stuff in the post, yes, that's what he told me anyway, or I zoomed.
Okay, I didn't know, okay.
If not, I'll look into more.
Okay. Um, yeah, talk to you a little bit about N E N E D, that's the Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District. Um, they are the grant administrators for our downtown revitalization project, and then also our housing project. We're having some really big issues with them, um, they've gone through, they've completely turned their staff over, so they have all new people. Communication has been very poor, staff is not well-trained, um, it's been a year, so I feel like we, as the city, have given them grace to kind of figure stuff out, but it's really affecting and impacting our projects now. On the housing project, you guys know that we asked for eighty-four thousand dollars more from the state, uh, on that amended budget, uh, because of the COVID prices and it, and that driving that cost up. That application was due March twenty-third. I went to N E N E D and worked with our community planner, her name was Raya, personally for two and a half hours, on our project and Pierce's project, because I could not get what I needed across to her via email or on the phone, she, it just, there was just some breakdown in the communication. So I went there personally and went through all the pro formas, put in all the numbers, put in all the things that the investors said that they would do extra, and all of our investors have done extra. I mean, they're increasing the loan amounts, the projects used to be sixty forty, sixty percent grant funded, forty percent from them, so that was like a gift. We're more like going the other way now, you know, and it, they barely cash flow, so, i- it's tough, and so everyone's giving a little. Well, then I started receiving, Courtney and I started receiving emails from our D E D housing rep, a couple weeks ago saying, hey, we don't have your pro forma for this project, we don't have your, um, rental agreements, we don't have your updated this or that, and I'm thinking, what in the world happened? So I, I emailed Raya, included Courtney in these, and I said, do you need, she asked, do you need Pierce's stuff too? Apparently the D E D got all the stuff for Pierce, we were the ones that are out. So a week went by, while I was at this conference last week, I had a little bit of time, I emailed our housing rep and I said, hey, did you ever get that information that you needed from N E N E D? Nope, she hadn't received a thing. Our planner was there at this conference with me. I'm like, you're on, basically away from the office when you have all this stuff to do. I was really frustrated, so I reached out to Courtney and says, somebody needs to call down to N E N E D, she did, she reached out to Tom, which is the director, and sh- they said that she would have, it's submitted by Thursday morning, and this was a Wednesday. So, apparently it's been submitted, but I don't know if they've gotten it all, I haven't heard any feedback yet. Courtney and I, three weeks ago, sat down on a conference call with the two directors of N E N E D to say, hey, this is an issue. Um, on top of the housing project, we have our downtown revitalization. We have business owners that have had the work done, the work is, they have new roofs, new windows, things are complete. N E N E D has, as they submit those drawdowns, which you guys are familiar with, the drawdowns go to them, they submit them to the state, the state reimburs, the city, we cut a check to the contractors, everything is done in five days, seven days, once we receive a check back, this whole process should take thirty days. Some of our contractors have not been paid since October, because all of the drawdowns are getting rejected by the state, everything that N E N E D has submitted has been rejected, because these people do not know what they're doing. They are screwing up on the submissions, it's all attention to detail stuff, little things that they're missing, Courtney's getting these emails, I'm getting these emails. Courtney's getting harassed by contractors calling the city saying, where's my money, it's been, you know, months, we have high inflation, they don't have the ability to float. Those bit, those contractors are also hounding the business owners, that's putting stress on everybody. Our business owners, twenty-four of them, have only been in business for less than three years, they don't have ten, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars to float funds. I have one business owner that did float over twenty thousand dollars for windows, and it's been since August, he did the first half, then he did the second half, he's out. Twenty thousand dollars and doesn't know how they're gonna pay taxes on, when this quarter comes up, because all of these things keep getting rejected. Today, we found out that the last drawdown that was submitted, once again, was rejected. And the worst part about the rejections was, for months, Courtney and I didn't know they were getting rejected, Courtney actually logged into Amplifun to see what was going on, and saw all of these rejections from the state. We were not getting notified by N E N E D, they were not calling us and telling us, and then we started looking at those dates, they would get a rejected drawdown, and it could be anywhere from like two weeks to three weeks before they would resubmit. If you're getting a rejected drawdown for thirty, forty thousand, you should probably turn around and make that your priority and submit that again, or let the communities know. So when we talked to Tom and Tina, we said, hey, look, communication is poor, we wanted Courtney to start getting the emails from the state so that they were, so we were aware, so she wouldn't have to keep logging into Amplifun, taking time out of her day to do that, and sure enough, today, Courtney goes and looks, rejected. No notification from N E N E D, no notification from the state, notification, I think, finally came in this afternoon at three thirty from N E N E D saying, oh yeah, the drawdown was rejected, we'll, we'll go ahead and resubmit it, have a great evening. Like, i- it's such a problem. The thing about N E N E D is they charge us sixty dollars an administrative hour, that money is coming out of the grant. Um, so we're paying for basically nothing at this point, and then we also on top pay dues each year to N E N E D, and I'm not sure what our dues are. Several thousand, I'm sure. So, we're not the only community, at these two conferences, I was talking to other developers from other communities, Hardington, Neely, Columbus, Fremont, Wakefield. All of us were saying the same, because N E N E D reps were there, and so we were just sort of like, giving them dagger eyes. We all have the same issue. Neely has written a formal letter to N E N E D saying, we are no longer going to be partnered with your organization, and they rejected paying their fee. I am encouraging you guys to do the same, we're stuck with the drawdown. What they're gonna, or with the drawdowns on these two projects, what they'll do is, so instead of paying sixty dollars administrative hour as a member community, they might charge you a hundred, but all their money can only come out of the grant, and once they exhaust those funds, that's it, so they only get thirty, twenty, twenty thousand for the housing, and thirty for D T R. Anything else that's expended beyond that is on them, because that's all they can get. They can't charge us anything else. Uh, Columbus is ready to, and one of the things we talked about is, I'm gonna go this summer and get C D B G certified. That is the only thing that they do that we need them for, is this administration for C D B G block grants. I already administer all of your U S D A grants, I administer all the other grants that we get, the only thing I don't administer is the C D B G. Um, I've been told that since I do, U S D As are bare, if you do those, these are easy. So, I'm just gonna go get certified, so we can administer our own grants, and I asked our state rep, and they said, sure, once you're certified and you can handle it, you can cancel your contract with N E N E D and you're done. So, that's my suggestion, and then some of the other communities are asking if they can partner with us. Uh, if we, if I do do that, like, Neely already is asking, hey, can we do an interlocal, could you do our grant administration too? We'll see how much time I have, but, uh, that's kind of what we're looking at, because it's very frustrating. No amount of talking to them, and we're not the only community that has talked to them, those other communities have also had one-on-ones with Tom and Tina, just like Courtney and I did, and nothing has changed.
Where are they from?
Norfolk.
They're next to.
Remember Lowell Schroder?
Yeah.
Lowell worked for them, now he works for Five-Rule.
Right.
Cause I wrote him a grant, I got him a better job.
Yeah.
To work for Five-Rule. So.
Tom's the highest?
Yeah.
Tom and Tina, Tom Higginbotham and Tina Engelbart.
And is this a business, like, owned, or is this, you know, state of Nebraska?
So, we're, what we call a development district, and there's a few of them in the state, so they're the northeast Nebraska one, there's a southeast Nebraska one called S K E D. There's one for central Nebraska, and there's one for north-central Nebraska. Um, I don't know who technically owns them, or if they're just public entities, but they're just called the development districts, and they won't compete with each other. So like, if, if we got rid of N E N E D and I called S K E D and said, hey, will you help us out, they won't cross the boundary into our area, and I don't know why, I've asked Lowell, he said they just don't. So, our only solution then is to find another C D B G certified administrator. Miller and Associates is one, but the problem I ran into, I was talking to Brunswick, they got a downtown revitalization to do a road, and Miller is their city engineer, but the state came and said, your city engineer cannot be your grant administrator. So they had a contract with the north-central district, um, and they had a hard time getting that contract, because that entity really focuses more on housing than anything else, and didn't really wanna deal with the D T R. So we've got some challenges, cause there's only so many people in the state that do that.
And the latest from this afternoon, Courtney sent some stuff up, I talked with Susan about it just a little bit. Now they've added a requirement that there be a note and a lien on all these grant properties, which the owners weren't told in the beginning, and a lot of them aren't expecting, it might cause them some grief, not to mention, a great deal of extra paperwork for each of twenty-two.
In round one, there's twenty-two businesses, so now, we ha- we did not know that if you get a D T R grant, the city now is gonna put a five-year lien on your building, or your property, until the grant dollars fall off, according to the state.
But we're gonna have to have a community meeting of some kind and get all these people together and.
Right.
And they're gonna be.
So, I mean, one, one thought is, N E N E D's, they're, they're in trouble then, is that what they're telling us?
Well.
But next thing is, what do we do about the issue?
The problem is, if the, if, if N E N E D didn't inform Susan and nobody knew, but it really is a rule, the state won't release the money unless they see the lien. There may be a workaround, I've given it a little thought since we talked, but we're gonna have to talk to the folks in Lincoln and N E N E D, and then perhaps have a community meeting and look at a little batch of additional paperwork for everybody, or maybe not, it may be there are some other things we can do. You know, it aggravates me to some extent that they led them all into this with those applications that did not say they had to have a note and a lien, but now they say they do. They've come up with it since then, now maybe N E N E D just didn't know, and therefore, Plainview didn't know.
But the thing about N E N E D is, it's their job to lead us down that path, right? We wanna do downtown revitalizations, so, what are the requirements? As a development district that we pay to belong to, they give us the list of documentation that's required. You have to have a public hearing, you have to have this, you have to have that, you know, they work with the city clerks, they like, make sure that everything's legal, because the state requires it. That is part of the service. We knew that if you, and it's on the, in the initial guidelines when you apply that, you can't change anything about your property for five years if you get this, like, the stuff you put on. So let's say you get new windows, you can't take your windows off, they have to stay on your building for five years, or if you get a new roof, well, no one's gonna take windows, roofs, brick, you know, awnings and doors off, so it was just sort of like, well, whatever, we know that we have to have it for five years, or if you sold your building, then that, whatever's left would have to transfer to the new owner, and there would be some paperwork, which, I mean, I had run into that when I was working with Creighton, so, no big deal. The fact that we now have to issue promissory notes and deeds of trust on people's property, this is something that the business owners should have known before they ever applied, because we would not hide that from them, because then that might affect the decision, well, maybe I don't want to apply for this grant, maybe I wanna retire in a year, and I don't, you know, wanna deal with whatever comes next, cause then it transfers.
And as a reminder, the business owners had to perform the work first.
Yes.
Then get the money.
Correct.
So they're, they're.
So we have business owners that are completely out, so one of the things I talked to Courtney about, and I mean, again, we have twenty-four that are new, twenty-two are in round one, we're getting ready to open round two. I'm afraid to open round two, cause of the mess of round one, but we still need to at some point. But the thing is, we might have to use our L B eight forty money to pay these contractors off, and then the city will have to wait for this, the check from the state, and then put that money back into L B eight forty, because our business owners are really being hassled.
But it's gotta be solved, we've gotta convince.
It's illegal by order.
You nonetheless have to convince the state to release the money, and if they can't be persuaded to back off on this lien deed of trust business, then the simple answer is just do it, although it's a huge annoyance and a lot of trouble and paperwork. I mean, the owners all knew that they were obligated to keep their stuff for five years, that's what this would all say. But the fact that they come in and kind of backdoored it now, and now they're not releasing the money, is the problem. We'll, we'll be in on talking to the state, I think, to see if there's anything to, to get them to back off on it. I've just seen it starting this afternoon, that it was an issue. But we're gonna have to have some kind of meeting with the state, and then probably some kind of local meeting to inform people all at once, rather than one at a time, what's gotta be done, we'll see.
Right.
Is that the main reason why they're getting rejected, is just because of that, or through other issues?
No, that, that's on the backend, like, when the project's complete, they submit, like, the final stuff to the state, the reason they're getting rejected now is that the person who's submitting the drawdowns is putting things in the wrong category, not the right amount, it's like little attention to detail things, but she's just not figuring.
There's a lot of reasons. But among them are, they've now imposed this new rule that, when you're all done with everything else, you gotta have this, well, that's still a problem.
So they would also get rejected because of that, so that.
They're not, they're not gonna reject it for that right now, but when we get to the end of this thing, like, when we wanna close out the grant, we've gotta submit all that documentation. Okay. Cause we have to close out, then all the business owners' projects are now closed and satisfied by the state, we have to submit those then, so, we're like a year and a half from needing to submit all of that, but now that we know about it, it's a problem, because the first twenty-two business owners didn't, didn't get told, cause we didn't get told, so it's a, it's an issue of transparency.
We'll see if there's any kind of workaround, but it's.
So my thing for you is, I'm gonna encourage you, N E N E D has sent out the letter for the member communities to pay their dues. I would encourage you to reject that, don't pay that due, um, and send a letter to N E N E D saying, hey, we're not satisfied. You're charging a sixty dollars administrative hour and you're not doing what we need you to do. Um, Courtney has very efficient, super organized, as you know, submits things very timely manner, and then months would go by, and this person from N E N E D would be like, hey, I can't find this invoice, I can't find this thing, and Courtney's having to resubmit all of this information a couple times over, and we're getting charged for that, we're getting charged for this person who can't figure their stuff out. Um, again, they're new, but it's been a year, I feel like I gave them a lot of grace for about eight months, and the last two months, I can't do it anymore, I just can't, so, um, it's up to you whether you wanna pay the membership fee, I would encourage you not. No, if you don't pay it, Tom and Tina will probably come to a meeting and beg for you to come back, but you should know, this is what we're up against, and this is why we don't wanna belong.
There's no reason not.
We're not the only town.
Put their feet to the fire a little bit, after all the trouble you've had.
So.
How soon would you be certified?
I think that there's a class either at the end of June or early September, I have to look, those are the two times a year that the state usually does that class, so I'm gonna need to look and, and see. So. I mean, at least I'm familiar with our projects, like, today, the girl doesn't even know what projects go to what, I'm like, are you kidding me, you have, it was just, I don't know, anyway. it was just, I don't know. Anyway, we shall be long. Um Clown Days Festival, uh so a lot of the committees have met. Um as far as the festival side of it, we're good to go. Uh we have a little hiccup where uh heard from our carnival company yesterday or Sunday and they use migrant workers from Mexico, which we knew, um but they're having issues getting their visas. So if they don't get their visas by Thursday, we are not going to have a mechanical carnival. We have a mechanical plan B. Which would suck, but it is what it is. Um so, and that's actually gonna affect all the county fairs in our area because they use the same company and so like there's some issues going on with all of that, but um I'm not happy. I don't think I was very nice to the lady when she was giving me her sob story. I think I was pretty mad because we booked other events based on that one bringing different kinds of people to come. So anyway, we'll work on that, but hopefully we have the flyers and everything ready to go for you by this Thursday or Friday. Um we're kind of holding off because if we can take the carnival off, I don't wanna print that. So we're just waiting on that right now, but everyone else should be good to go. Clown Museum is not gonna be open.
Beckman had talked to me about bringing in a shredder to clear for the Bull Ride area. Do you know if he's got that lined up?
A shredder?
Yeah. To mow the weeds and grass down short and get it ready to go.
The Bull Ride is Cassie.
That's Cassie.
And she's got her own committee with that.
Beckman was trying to line up a shredder as of a week ago.
Okay.
But, well, maybe I should talk to Cassie.
Maybe ask him if he got the beer truck while we're talking.
He wasn't down, he wasn't downtown today that I knew of, so I didn't talk to him today.
Yeah, the Bull Ride is kind of Cassie's baby, so the rest of us are not participating in that because we've got everything else going on, but street dance is good to go. Um we should be ready for that event. Um and all the other events that we have lined up are pretty nice. So backup for the carnival, if we lose it, we're gonna just do the U-Hop inflatables. Um there's a guy who does virtual reality, uh gaming truck. Um he's wanted to come a couple times. I'll bring him in. We do have a face painting lady coming, um and I'll look and see if we can find the pony ride guy and, and kind of fill in some of that space with what the money that we would have spent on that, but um otherwise we should be good. And Woodhouse Ford did donate once again the four thousand dollars for the fireworks show, so we do have the fireworks again this year and that was very nice of them, so. Um that. Um so you got the update on the four plagues. We're just, we're, they are now reviewing our application, so hopefully we hear something relatively soon about the four plagues project. Um so that we can run the numbers ourselves one more time to make sure that it still works for the investor. Um there has been some talk about throwing LB eight forty money into the mix just to see if that would help, but honestly, we'll as far upside down as it is, it's no amount of money that we can give for something like that to, to work, so I don't think we're gonna do that. Um let's see, what else do I have? On the Rural Innovation Challenge Grant, you guys, uh so the comp, the comp plan is done. So Lowell is gonna now come in and work with you guys on the tailored strategic plan and that's gonna be using all the ECAP data, the community engagement data from the past. Um so we should hopefully have all of this done by the end of the summer for you guys. You could always go to that riserregion.com website to look at the maps, the land use maps and everything that was developed for that project. Um and then University of Nebraska wants to come back. We are their poster child obviously for ECAP and they've touted us all across the state. Uh we literally actually crossed every single thing off the list that the community asked us to do. Um other than the music, like housing, we'll just rinse and repeat, keep doing some of those things there in, in the downtown, obviously it's getting done. Um so they wanna come back and do something new called Recap ECAP. So because we have all this momentum going, I told, like when I was talking to them, I said, I'm a little afraid that we're gonna lose it because we, you know, we've kind of pushed ahead and started doing all this stuff and it just really snowballed. It's been great. I don't wanna lose the momentum though. Like there's still things that we could do. Um and so they wanna come back in and maybe do some sort of visioning. It won't be the, the whole survey intense thing that we did four years ago, but something similar. So when you hear about it and you see it, put it on your calendar and come and be part of the conversation um to kind of see where we go next. I think that's it. I've talked enough. So any questions? Nope.
Okay. City superintendent report, city attorney.
I really just got a short uh mention of where we're at with the small box situation. You know, we knew, you knew, we talked a little bit, six weeks ago, something Mark had filed a motion to dismiss. And I, I agreed with him. I thought that was worth a try. And his, his main point was they didn't go through the process. Well, they really never applied. They never got denied. They just got mad. They wanted some guarantee they were gonna get their permit. So the motion to dismiss was done. He filed a brief, they filed a brief, they both did twenty pages of research and analysis. They gave it to the federal district judge in Omaha. He sat on it for a month, turned out a thirty-page opinion. More constitutional law about small-town ordinances than I even knew existed. And he reviewed all the stuff and essentially agreed with Mark's position that they didn't go through the process. They didn't get denied. So on that aspect, the motion to dismiss was granted. The one thing that they raised for a defense that bothered the judge, I think it's fair to say, he didn't rule on it. He said, I, something like I suggest, but I am not ruling, that the vagueness of some of the terms bothered him. Disadvantage to the local stores, tend to drive out other businesses. The vagueness of terms and he spent ten pages analyzing how vague is too vague for constitutional purposes. And Mark came to the conclusion, and I think I agree with him, that he's headed down that path. So he would like to do what we did again, uh two months ago. Maybe polish on a couple of those terms. The judge has now pointed out which terms are bothering him. And we just, Susan and I, you know, put this whole thing together in four days out of a mass of other ordinances used by other communities. But uh Mark is of the opinion we could improve the city's situation by making this a little more definite, maybe putting in some definitions, maybe putting in a checklist of factors. So he wants to work that up and run it past the zoning board and perhaps have it for you next month to consider. Another possible amendment in the ordinance. You know, at some point, if we amend this ordinance, and I brought this up to Mark, if we're amending the ordinance to make better definitions that they have complained about, uh they're gonna say they won something. Cause we're, you know, giving up on those. But I agree with the theory of don't fight about things that might be questionable. If you think there's a definition we can do better, perhaps we can put a definition in it. So I'm gonna work with Mark to look at that. You know, I'm trying to stay back and leave him as the primary on this and I have. But the insurance company is essentially saying, well, if you wanna draft a couple of new paragraphs for your ordinance, get the city attorney to do most of that because we're here to defend the city, not to write their ordinance. So that, that's somewhat understandable. We gotta help them out a little bit here. Uh we'll, but I'll certainly do whatever Mark wants as far as working on those definitions. But we'll see. You may have something to look at next month. It, it was close, it seems to me. It just about threw out the whole thing. But the judge gave him a little nibble on this business of con, unconstitutionally vague. You know, my take on that is the city council gets to have some discretion. You get to decide how bad is bad, but maybe there does need to be some more standards to have them something they can check off. So we'll see. Uh you may see something come of it this next week or this next month. It hasn't gone away anyway. Two-thirds of it perhaps has gone away, but there's still a, a portion of it that's out there. But really nothing to decide here. I just wanted to give you a heads up. And, and the zoning board would have to agree to cooperate with this and analyze certain factors or something if they wanna do that. Tie their hands essentially to a set of standards and we can come up with that. You wouldn't think we would have to. They should have just the discretion, I think. But if we're gonna nitpick it to this level, thirty pages of analysis of constitutional vagueness is worth some study. That's really all I've got on that. If you have questions, I could try, but there's no specifics right now. You'll see the specifics and have something to decide perhaps next month.
He did really repeat himself in that a lot. I see why he took a month. I read most of it.
You read some of that?
Oh yeah.
It was long and torturous and you, you wanna say, oh my god.
Yeah.
Can't the city have any discretion here?
But I did like that last page.
How definite can you make?
The last page was like, cause you were like, wait, is this good or is this bad?
Yeah.
Um I did a question. So you called me when I was in round time last week and you asked for like defined terms uh of food desert.
And you sent me some stuff.
Was it references? I mean, there was fifty, fifty references there.
It, it strikes me strange that Mark tells us that he can't find anything that defines food desert.
Yeah.
And the opposition had one other phrase. They said they can't define anything. Some rules for uh food desert set by the CDC or something like that. But not the CDC, but whatever that group would be. And those things are out there, but I think what we're getting out of Mark and the court is they're researching only legal cases.
Yeah.
I don't think they're getting to the other sources where that sort of stuff came from.
Right.
So uh that's what I'll help him with a little bit and we may talk some more.
Okay.
I sent him that reference that you sent that the day after I called.
Fifty-four cited sources.
Yeah.
One of them's gotta work.
And you know, yeah, they're not hard law, but they're the definitions that the feds use for those things and that's what we're talking about.
Well, it's what the USDA used to form the term.
And that's what we said in the ordinance.
Right.
As developed by the USDA, well.
Well, I think the interesting thing here is that I don't think, well, there was one other, there's only a couple of small towns that we found in the research that actually fought Dollar General and won.
Well, that's the problem is that, you know, this isn't very well-developed even nationwide.
Call that town in Delaware and say, what was the term and where'd you find it? But I don't know.
Well, we'll be sending some stuff in the way of definitions in anyway.
So the, the dismissal was granted, but when you say like two-thirds of its.
Partially. I mean, you.
It's a partial dismiss, dismissal or?
Partial dismissal.
They dismissed the part where like Dollar General is trying to say that we created, created a closed economy. Right? They, you know, like we were.
We're not, we're not protecting the family of dollars.
Right.
We're not protecting.
I mean, there were things like that that they threw out. They weren't able to prove.
Three or four of their claims, he said, nope, you're losing on those people. But the business of vagueness left him wondering a little bit.
What does a partial dismissal mean for the city then that we have to clarify?
Well, I can't, I can't uh deal with that here. You wanna get out the opinion and we'll get you some quotes out of it or something. We sure can.
I, I, I'm just curious what, what that means for.
Lawsuit, their lawsuit is not dead. It's half gone or two-thirds gone. But they can still proceed to argue about, is the ordinance unconstitutionally vague?
So they would have to file something additional then?
No, no, it's in their petition. They're claiming that already.
It's just there's some things they can't go back and argue for. Like you created a closed economy. We didn't. The judge said, we didn't. So you can't go and argue that anymore.
What would be the next step then? Clarifying these terms?
Well.
But that doesn't.
The, the clarifying of the terms is kind of a side issue that we can do. I mean, I, that was the position I just took with Mark from the beginning. I said, you know, we can change this ordinance anytime you want, if you see reason we should do that. And maybe improve the city's situation. But it, but the lawsuit continues on the text that's originally there for now. And as, you know, but it's, it's a thirty-five page opinion. We can't summarize it in two sentences here.
Right, I'm not, I'm not asking you to. I'm just curious, like that means that there's still a court date and there's still like the argument sides or?
There's no hard date for a trial yet. This is all early in the game. But the motion to dismiss was there. Then Mark has to file an answer for the stuff that wasn't dismissed. And then there's room for some additional discovery and eventually it will come to trial. I have no idea what their calendar is.
I think the really interesting thing is why, why Plameview inside city limits and why do they want it so bad? Because in most of the towns, they're on the outside of the city limits.
An awful lot, an awful lot they are.
There's nothing stopping them from going outside our city limits, you know, and I offered to help them if they did, but, and then Osmond wanted one really bad and I, I did through free land from Osmond in there and they didn't want that either. They want that lot that bad. The question is why? And I don't think it's too hard to figure out why. So it's interesting.
And they think there's a big conspiracy because Jeremy talks to Susan. Susan talks to Jeremy.
A bad guy.
Oh my god.
A city employee.
Yeah. Why did you, why did you tell Susan like this?
Somebody came and asked me about the economic government and I told Susan about it and now I'm here.
I know.
How strange. So there, there may be some developments there. I mean, I'm, I'm still gonna leave the overall judgment call to Mark relative to the lawsuit, but we may have a little tweak to the ordinance to make it better.
So Mark has to send a reply and then we figure that's the next step pretty much?
If you want me to make a list, I'm gonna have to work at that a little bit. The reason, the reason largely that we have Mark is this is federal district court. I don't do federal district court. So if we want a list of timing, I need to get one from Mark. But I did just send him another guy that's in federal district court last week, so now he's got two from Plameview. Different project.
Number five, discussion, action, approval of pool board recommendations for employees. Do we have more applicants?
They approve.
Um last month you had approved Ronnie Pruitt as a lifeguard. She's now gonna be assistant manager, so you just need to give the okay that it's okay for her to be assistant manager now instead of the lifeguard.
Does she have to do additional training right now?
Uh she'll get a manager's certificate, but that's it.
Okay, need a motion in a second for Ronnie Pruitt.
Who's assistant manager for the pool?
Okay, second. All in favor, Brian?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Discussion, action, approval of pool board recommendation for wages.
Uh we're gonna do eleven dollars an hour. Manager's eleven seventy-five and then full-time returning guards are ten, so we thought was kind of splitting the difference between the two of them, so.
Approve the recommended wages for the folks.
Okay, second.
Second motion.
Okay, Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number seven, discussion, action, approval of seasonal park employees.
Yep, uh we only had one obviously last time. Luckily, uh we found two more, Scott Hints and Anthony Zieggenbach.
Oh, nice.
They both fly and. Need to be good help for us.
Approve seasonal park employees, the two that were recommended.
Second.
Second motion.
Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number eight, discussion, action, approval of wages for seasonal park employees.
Uh they're new to us and so is Andrew and then we'll get paid at nine fifty. Zieggenbach? Don't ask me how to spell that.
C.I.E.G.N.B.E.I.N.
Uh make a approval to, for the wages for the seasonal park employees.
Okay, second.
Second motion.
Brian?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number nine, discussion, action, headboard recommendations for nuisance properties. First one's one oh seven South Pine Street.
I recommend uh sending one oh seven South Pine Street to Luke.
Second.
Court.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, Tyler?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number, the second one is one oh six West Locust.
Make a motion to, for one oh six West Locust, uh send it to Luke.
Okay, second.
I'll second the motion.
Pam?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries. Two twelve East Locust.
Make a motion for two twelve East Locust, send it to Luke.
Okay, second.
Second.
Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Motion carries. Two fourteen East Locust.
Make a motion to send two fourteen East Locust to Luke.
Second. Pam?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries. And one oh eight South Elm.
Make a, motion to send one oh eight South Elm to Luke.
Okay, second.
I'll second it.
Second, Brian?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number ten, discussion, action, approval of LB eight forty loan recommendation. Mary's Restaurant, four thousand three hundred dollars for ice machine.
This is a real simple, easy one. Um Mary's Restaurant kind of came to us and said that they were getting charged quite a bit for ice from their ice vendor and they were looking. and they were looking into getting an ice machine. Um and this machine will pay for itself within six months. That's how much they're getting charged for ice. So um just to alleviate, you know, maybe a short-term business expense, uh LB eight forty looked at this loan and they went ahead and approved it. Uh it's a twenty-four month loan. Um it's prime plus one, so currently I think it's about four and a half percent on on the interest rate.
And somebody's gonna have to get me the real details as to what prime plus one means on whatever day they're talking about.
They aren't doing that until she gets invoiced, so we aren't gonna do that until she gets invoiced. We'll give you the amount at the time she's invoiced. Cause that can change from day to day, so.
Bankers may know day by day what prime plus one is, but I'd like them to tell me what they want.
Yeah, yep. Yep, yep. And prime's been sitting at, well, it was at three thirty-five. It's up now, I think, percent, so about to.
Yeah, for this amount, it won't amount to squat.
It won't, it won't amount to much. It's like a quick twenty-four month loan. They can pay it off anytime in between, no penalty. It's just a real, it's just a quick fix to kinda get them over this hump, so.
Make a motion to approve the loan for four three hundred for the ice machine from the LB eight forty.
Second.
Second. Brian?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Hi.
Motion carries. Number eleven, discussion, action, approval of twenty dash TFRH dash three five oh two three DD number three. One thousand seven hundred eighty-one dollars twenty-five cents.
These are admin fees for the housing project. I just think it'd be a good. The project they didn't submit any of this stuff for, right?
Right.
Worth everything.
Yeah.
Motion approve the amount of one thousand seven hundred eighty-one dollars and twenty-five cents.
Hmm, second.
Second motion.
Pam?
Hi.
Tyler?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number twelve, proclamation, national skilled nursing care week, May fourteen, or May eighth to the fourteen, twenty twenty-two. Whereas we honor and respect our elders and citizens of any age with physical or intellectual disabilities who reside in Plainview Manor in Plainview. And whereas skilled nursing care centers throughout our area are holding an observance of national skilled nursing care week, May eighth to fourteen, twenty twenty-two, using this year's theme of creating and nurturing connections. And whereas I urge all citizens to virtually visit or call a loved one, family member or friend residing in any care setting and offer a kind word and spend time participating in various virtual activities to unite those from all walks of life in need of our continuing love and support. And whereas my administration is committed to quality healthcare, we take this moment to embrace the essence of the theme creating and nurturing connections. Let's join, let's all join Plainview Manor, their staff, volunteers, residents and their families and friends in celebrating this special week. And therefore do I, Brian Schloty as mayor of Plainview, declare the week of May eighth to fourteen, twenty twenty-two as National Skilled Nursing Care Week. A week to honor the important role that skilled nursing care centers provide in caring for and protecting our most vulnerable citizens. And you probably saw in the uh packet from the nursing home, there's a parade on, or drive-by parade fundraiser meal on Wednesday night. Um number thirteen, discussion, action, Lower Elkhorn Natural Resources District Grant. Plainview Brunswick Community Fund Park Project, one hundred four thousand six hundred thirty-eight dollars and ninety-five cents.
So that's actually the total quote we have in the packet. That won't be the actual number because some of this will go to the Brunswick.
Sure.
Park. And then they did change a couple of things on the paint and pickleball net, so it's not gonna be exactly the number. Um the nice thing to know about this is it's not, the city will be tackling the project. I'll be working with these guys to get things done. But it's gonna be funded through the P P C F and um we have graciously found donors throughout the community in our area that believe it's a great project for us. So um like I said, if you guys ever wanna, I got a pad up front, a pad back here if you wanna take a look at what the tennis courts are gonna be, but it's, they're working hard at it, so good deal.
Absolutely.
Um as far as the grant goes, it's, so we've had a Lower Elkhorn D grant one more, it's one time in the past and that was for the Standby Elkhorns. So it's a reimbursable grant, so the city will expend thirty thousand dollars, then we reimburse the thirty thousand and we have one year to complete the project from the time you sign the contract.
Does it look like it's gonna be completed? That availability?
Uh Kevin, so, I'm sorry, I can't talk to you. I talked to Kevin today about it because he was the contact guy. And he thinks that the product is here and it'll be done after concrete. It can be done in like three weeks.
So the first company we were talking to um was, I think it was Snap Sports. They were saying that it was four months out. But this is Tri-City and the Durkport tiles are the exact same, but Dirk, the um Tri-City's out of South Sioux City, so they're more local. And he said there was no issue with getting the supplies.
I think by the end of summer it'll be done.
Okay, so not gonna have any issues?
No, I think they'll recall for another bid.
Yeah?
The other ones were higher, even.
Yeah, the other one was higher. This was, this was cheaper and the other company wouldn't come out here. I mean, I think Jim Kraus tried several times to get the guy to show up and he wouldn't and Tri-City showed up on a weekend, Saturday. So obviously work with the willing and that's the company that, you know, they would like to use, but that's up to the city too, so.
Make a move. You wanna motion right to the?
Yes, please.
LE N R D grant, uh P D C F Park Project for a hundred four thousand six hundred thirty-eight dollars?
It's not gonna be that number, but that's.
Okay, let's just get that number done for the park project.
Yeah, okay.
And second.
No. The two of the projects for both league.
Any further discussion? Brian?
Aye.
Pam?
Hi.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number fourteen, council comments, Pam's? Tyler? Council comments, or?
Uh no. Good job, Susan.
Thank you.
Love her.
Where are we sitting on our water issue?
Uh great question. Uh he's gonna come the thirty-first to talk with us at the city and then we will present in June.
Have we, have the R O companies?
So, so with your question though, we're not sitting on it.
No.
This is just the process.
This is the process, yes.
So everybody out there that's reading letters, editors and this is just a process. This is how long things take.
Yep, cause we have to submit to the state first before we can even do anything. So he'll come in here, present his findings, um options, R O, well sites. And then you guys go, yep, that looks like a good plan. And then it goes to the state and then they have to approve to the state and then we'll start. So it's, I know it's a long drawn process and everything, so we should have dug a well four months ago, but at, when I'm told that's just the way it is.
Well, it'd just be nice to know where we're sitting because we haven't heard anything.
Yep. Yep, so um June, you will, the engineer will be in front of you guys, so.
Yeah.
Are you people gonna do the regular meeting then?
Um either regular meeting, he's supposed to call state, so the thing about that is, is due June fourteenth, which happens to be our um meeting day. So he's gonna call and see if he can submit the next day after approval from the council, or he might have a special meeting beforehand just to talk about that. But we'll, we'll make sure it's known when he, when we find out, so.
Will he be selecting a, a plan then, or is it just, he said he's presenting?
He's presenting, yeah, their, their plan moving forward.
Which, which direction to go? Okay, I don't know if there's gonna be options or if that's gonna be a lengthy discussion at all or?
You know what? I've never done one of these, so we'll find out together.
Okay.
Well, you said options. I mean, he's gonna, he's gonna.
Yeah, that's what he, yeah, there are options for you to do a well and then.
Analyze the reverse osmosis and various well sites and.
But I think no matter what, the state has to approve those options even before we get to.
Sure.
I don't know what level that the, of decision I guess the council would have to make. I mean, if there's like four well sites, that might be a lot of discussion as far as what's most cost effective and they're just getting that information in one night. They're not gonna have any time to analyze it.
I, I think the options would all probably, I'm assuming, I don't really know, I'm assuming those all probably go to the state. I think it's more not the cost, I think it's more about the quality of water they found down there.
Right, but I mean, if he's presenting a bunch of options and.
Well, I don't know if he'll present a bunch of options. I think he'll probably present the best options, yeah.
A few, well, I, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't care. Um so I'll find out more thirty-first and that'll let us know if we have to have a special meeting beforehand, so.
Okay, I was gonna say like council members will probably want that information as soon as possible.
Mm-hmm, I agree.
Motion to adjourn?
If you're gonna do uh R O, please go get a bottle of water from Creighton, smell it and drink it before you do it.
Reverse osmosis?
Uh yeah, like one of the things that, I mean, since I worked for them for a while, one of the things that they didn't even realize when they did that project was that the reverse osmosis is really hard on the pipes. And when you have old and aging pipes, that's where that reaction is happening and there is a horrible smell and taste that goes along with that and.
Well, they gotta put minerals back in with that when they do that, so they may not be doing that.
Yeah.
Right. But there's, there's a leaching that's occurring with their old pipes? Bad, so.
You would think they would have that in their presentation, but it, the, the short answer is, and just what we were mentioning there, is Creighton learned they cannot treat a hundred percent of their water. Cause if they send strictly treated water through the old pipes, it sucks all the mineral and lead and every else out of the pipes. So they gotta throw in a certain amount of natural water with mineral in it, or it's a real bad problem. And so they, they have to blend it constantly and keep changing the blend to try and make it work.
Motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Second, all in favor, Ryan?
Aye.
Post stand.